Good evening, you feel arms and Nottinghamshire County Council.
My lady, may I begin by just returning to two topics that were left over from yesterday afternoon? The first, your ladyship asked about the point in time at which the statutory preference, as I described it, for foster care, which appeared in the 1948 Act, was removed. And the answer to that is with the advent of the 1969 Children and Young Persons Act. We don't have the provision, but if one looks at electronic bundle page 1583, that's the index to the 1969 Act. And one sees at paragraph 49, section 49 of that Act, under the heading Consequential Modifications of Section 13 and 19. 13 was the provision of the 48 Act in question, and it was amended. And we've checked the Act, of course, and it is now identical, it was then identical to the provision that now appears in the 1980 Act.
Thank you.
And so far, I'm afraid we weren't able, in the time available, to answer the other similar question which concerned when the general duty was modified. Turning to the question of whether there were regulations that are not in the bundle but relate to the obligations of the authority when a child is placed with a relative or friend, not somebody with, not a parent or somebody with parental responsibility or with a residence order. Our analysis leads us to the conclusion that there are not separate regulations and that, at least at the time when they were in force, the 1991 regulations which are behind divider seven would have applied to that situation. And I can briefly explain...
I don't think there's any need for you to take time. I mean, I will check whether I agree with you, but that's another matter.
I can say in a word that it arises from our construction of section 23 of the Children Act as enacted. I had introduced at the end of yesterday afternoon the subject of control and was going to go on to make our submissions on that issue, and they are two. The first of them is that in terms of the relationship between the foster carer and the local authority, the control exercised over the foster carer by the authority is not materially greater than that would generally be exercised by the employer of an independent contractor over that contractor. The nature, in fact, of the control was never an issue in these proceedings. It arises, as you have already been shown, from the provisions of the Boarding Out Regulations 1955. That identifies the various responsibilities that the local authority has, supplemented, as it was in this case, by the unchallenged evidence of Felicity Schofield as to what at the material time and perhaps also slightly before the material time would have been the position on the ground as a matter of expert social care practice. So far as the regulations are concerned, I made the submission yesterday that the majority of those obligations placed on the authority are in the category of placement and removal and concern that issue. I described a second category as essentially administrative but including, of course, the vital provision for monitoring of the placement. And I identified that really there were only two obligations which might properly be regarded as parenting obligations, and that was the provision of medical and dental treatment, although, as Miss Schofield observes, it would have been for the foster carer to take the child to the appointment, albeit that there was an obligation on the authority to ensure that that was done. And as I submitted yesterday, placement, monitoring and removal of a tort visa from the function they are performing are all powers that the employer of an independent contractor would exert over the contractor. In the case of foster care, day-to-day responsibility is left to the foster carer without external control or direction from the authority. Taking the child to school, to appointments, to clubs, to friends' houses, decisions about feeding, clothing the child, about discipline, subject to the regulations, the 1991 regulations outlaw any kind of physical punishment. Dealing with the child's behaviour, helping them with their problems, and so on, all of that, as you've seen, is set out in the report of Felicity Schofield at paragraphs 42 to 44, you've been taken to it. We accept, of course, and it's the evidence of our expert, Miss Schofield, that certain significant, some of the more important decisions about the child's upbringing, were reserved to the authority. Holidays, applying for passports, whether medical treatment should be undertaken, decisions of that sort. But our submission...
Whether the child should stay with those foster...
Most certainly that, of course.
Of course. Where a child is to live is the principle.
Absolutely, my lady.
Responsibility of parents to decide.
Yes. But I had sought to draw the distinction between placement and removal, which we fully accept are entirely the responsibility of the authority, and the day-to-day control over the upbringing of the child, which we submit is a different matter. We say in respect of those important decisions that they are reserved to the local authority, not because there is inherent in the relationship between the local authority and the foster carer, control over the foster carer, but because they are a function of the local authority's parental responsibility, which is, of course, at all times retained by the authority. And although the analysis in respect of the non-deligible duty issue, which we'll come to in due course, is significant, it's vital to focus on the relationship between the authority and the child. And the defendant has never doubted that that part of the woodland criteria is satisfied. So far as vicarious liability is concerned, one is looking at the relationship between the authority and the foster carer. And there is, we submit, very little control by the authority over the activities of the foster carer. So perhaps as with many questions in this case, if one asks, does the local authority control the actions of the foster carer, the answer is, well, it depends what you mean. Certainly on a macro level, whether the child is placed there, monitoring and removal, obviously the authority has that responsibility. But on a micro level, day-to-day dealing with the child, with the difficulties the child is facing, and bringing them up, as the undertaking requires as a member of the family, that is all left exclusively to the foster carer. The distinction between macro and micro control, as your lordships and your lady will appreciate, is one that Lord Justice Tomlinson drew in paragraph 15 of his judgment in the Court of Appeal, and we submit it's a useful distinction and one that does apply on the facts of this case.
Paragraph what, 15?
I think it's 15 of the judge...
15, I just misheard, yeah, 15, thank you.
And if that analysis is right, my lady, then in our submission, the functions that the local authority retains, placement, monitoring and removal, are, as we said at the beginning, consistent more with the relationship of an employer and an independent contractor, because, as I submitted, those functions would generally be reserved to the employer, albeit they would have little further input into how the work was performed. And so that's the right analogy in this case, rather than that of the relationship of employment. So that's our first submission on control. It receives support, we say, from the Canadian Supreme Court decision of KLB. But just before coming to that, which I want to do in a little detail, if I may, may I just introduce our second submission on control, and we put it, I'm making it second for reasons of logical progress through the argument, we say it's very important to our case, and it's this. Not only does the local authority not exercise day-to-day control over the foster carers, it is vital to the effective working of foster care that they do not. And that point, again, receives its support from the Canadian case of KLB, to which I will ask the court, please, to refer, it's in the, it's electronic bundle 1301, Authority's bundle 2, tab 20. My learned friend took you to the dissenting judgment in that case, and I think preceded that reference by a brief explanation of the case. I wonder if I might just add to it a little. It was a case which, on its face, is very similar factually to this case. The claimant had been abused in two different sets of foster, in two different foster homes. The trial judge had found, of course, this is not a similarity, the trial judge had found direct negligence, that is to say that the local authority had failed to exercise reasonable care in the selection and/or monitoring of the placement, or failed to respond to complaints, or whatever it may have been. And also found that there would be vicarious liability for the foster carers, and found that there was a breach of a non-deligible duty. He had permitted the case to proceed under the domestic limitation provisions, and it was on that issue that the Court of Appeal differed. The Court of Appeal said that the judge had been wrong to allow the claim to proceed on limitation grounds, but went on to say that if they had thought differently, they would have agreed with the learned judge that there was vicarious liability and a non-deligible duty. The case then reached the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court upheld the Court of Appeal on the issue of limitation, but said that the Court of Appeal was wrong on both the issue of vicarious liability and non-deligible duty. This was a case which the court will have noted, weighed heavily both with Mr. Justice Males in his analysis, particularly of the vicarious liability issues, and indeed with the Court of Appeal, all of whom, I add for the sake of completeness, concluded, of course, unanimously that there was no vicarious liability. Their reasoning may have differed on the non-deligible duty point, but they were unanimous about this. So may I start, please, with paragraph 19? I don't propose to read any of it out, rather I will summarise the opening paragraphs and then ask the court to read what we submit are the three or four key paragraphs to themselves. But summarising paragraph 19...
Would you be good enough to give a page reference?
Of course. 1316. This is part of the judgment of Chief Justice McLaughlin, and I think it was a seven-judge court, no, it was a nine-judge court, and with the exception of the judge who dissented, you were taken to that yesterday, all of the judges agreed with her judgment. What one sees at paragraph 19, some years, one might observe, before the case of the Christian Brothers was decided by this court, is the promulgation of a two-stage test for vicarious liability, with the focus on the first stage being the relationship between those concerned and the tort feeser and the employer, and the second stage, halfway through paragraph 19, about the close connection. Paragraph 20, this case is about the first stage, as indeed is ours. Reference at the top of the following page, 1317, as I noted in Basely, when an employer creates a risk and that risk materialises and causes injury, quoted, "It is fair that the person or organisation that creates the enterprise and hence the risk should bear the loss." So what I'm seeking to demonstrate here is that those issues which were identified in Christian Brothers and developed and refined later in Cox, the majority, in fact, form part of the learned judge's analysis in this case, and that's the judge's reference to the question of risk. In paragraph 21, reference to a Canadian case called Sagas, four or five lines down, what must always occur...
Just before we leave that, the Chief Justice identifies two policy goals of vicarious liability in paragraph 20. The first is the one you just quoted, fairness, essentially, that if it's your enterprise and you create the risk, you bear the loss. And the other is deterrence, which then, of course, becomes an important aspect of her judgment.
It does, and I readily accept that that was not a matter referred to in this court. It's a feature of the Commonwealth cases that there tends to be a more overt focus on policy issues, and I accept that. But this judge, and to an extent, Mr. Justice Males, did refer to the consequences of a finding of vicarious liability, and as your lordship says, this particular judge made the point that it was unlikely, I'll come back to this in due course, but it was unlikely that imposing vicarious liability would protect a child any more than would the deterrence that exists by virtue of the direct duty and the need to ensure that reasonable care is taken. That was her conclusion on that particular point.
Yeah. Her whole reason, I mean, really the whole judgment is epitomised in paragraph 20, where she explains that it's because, in her, on her approach, that the underlying goals are enterprise risk and deterrence, that therefore, that's why independent contractors aren't vicarious, there's no vicarious liability for independent contractor, because that's not an enterprise risk, and it wouldn't effectively deter the independent contractor.
Indeed.
Yeah. And the point I'm making is that that approach is not the same as Christian Brothers or Cox.
Well, it has echoes of, I've referred to it because it deals with the issue of enterprise risk. Enterprise risk is plainly a feature which does refer, I've made the concession that the analysis is not identical, because deterrence has never featured as a, but it's something that could be or should be in our submission, taken into account when one's considering whether overall it's fair, just and reasonable to impose the duty.
Well, who's being deterred? I read this paragraph as referring to deterrence of the employer, not deterrence of the contractor or performer.
It's encouraging steps to avoid...
That's right.
...the commission of the tort by the hands-on...
A greater degree of oversight and other things, yes.
Yes. The issue is whether the imposition of the obligation is likely to make the employer take more steps, greater steps, to protect the child from the tort visa than would occur if there was no vicarious liability. And this judge's conclusion, and we submit it's correct, is that the answer to that question is no, because they're already under an obligation to exercise reasonable care pursuant to the direct duty.
Well, it's not a question of the legal nature of the duty, about which you're obviously right, it's a question of whether, in practice, the imposition of strict liability, which is what vicarious liability is, faultless liability, will have the effect of making the employer increase the supervision, increase the monitoring, increase the safeguards, increase the care with which the selection process is taken, increase the hand of supervision, and so on.
That's the issue.
That's what she's talking about, isn't it?
That's what she's talking about, that's the issue. Her conclusion is, as we'll come to in a moment, that the answer to that is no. She goes on to take the point one stage further and says, in fact, its consequence may well be that if it is not able to take further steps to safeguard children in circumstances where there's virtually no control over what the foster carers are doing day-to-day, it may disencourage local authorities from placing children in foster care, which...
Is there any empirical evidence for either of those propositions?
There doesn't seem to have been in the case of KLB.
But quite apart from whether it would discourage the placement, do we or do we not need to address the question of whether it's actually in the public interest that the local authority should become more heavy-handed in its supervision, monitoring and control of foster parents?
That, only if, only if the conclusion is that the judge's analysis on this case, and it was Mr. Justice Males's view as well, was wrong. If the answer to the question, contrary to the answer that this judge gave and Mr. Justice Males gave, is that imposing vicarious liability would increase the level of safety that resulted from increased supervision and so on, then that is something the court should consider. But it's right to say there's no empirical evidence either way.
No, okay.
But this judge...
I'm just wondering whether these are matters that can be decided upon by impression? Do they not require to be made good by some form of evidence? I mean, one person might think, well, increasing the burden on local authorities is going to be contrary to the public interest, and another person may think, well, people who are abused, while in foster care, deserve a remedy, and it is in the public interest that they should not be denied a remedy. And all of these things are very much at the whim of the individual who's forming a view about them.
Well, my lord, I agree with that. The child abuse in foster care, even if we're right, of course, is not denied a remedy. There are various other avenues that can be taken, some of which were taken in this case, but she was unable to prove it. I'll again come back to that point, if I may. But on the issue of whether one needs evidence that an imposition of a vicarious liability would deter local authorities from placing children with foster carers, it's rather difficult to know how that could be obtained, certainly in this country.
So it's also rather difficult to know how it could actually be the case, because unless a family or friend's placement is available and suitable, they've only got two choices, foster care or institutional care, basically, and they are liable, vicariously liable, for what goes on in institutional care. So it's a little bit difficult to run this "it will deter foster placement" argument, given that that's the one where currently there's no vicarious liability, whereas with the other main one, there is.
Yes, but the reason why local authorities favour foster care at the moment is because it's reckoned by social care, first of all, there was the obligation under the Act that we discussed this morning, which is now gone, but it's because it's recognised for the reasons...
Because it's better.
Yes.
For most children, because it's better.
Yes.
The younger the child, the better it is.
It comes with certain risks. The view, as I'll take you to in due course when we come to it, that Mr. Justice Males took was that those risks were worth running because it's better. But the reason why that is, that is the reason why that is the preferred option, the fact that the local authority is vicariously liable if it places a child in one of its own care homes is plainly, obviously, a function of the fact that it employs people to work there and it has close control over what happens day-to-day.
But if the risk of vicarious liability is the same for the two types of placement, then one assumes that a rational local authority will make its choice based on which is the better placement for this particular child...
No, my lady, well...
Rather than on anything else.
I don't accept that. One needs to consider whether the local authority would be required to say to itself, and again, I accept there's no empirical evidence about this, but it was the view Mr. Justice Males took, would be required to say to itself, well, we have so little control over what happens in foster carers that we can't run the financial risk of exposing ourselves to a vicarious liability by continuing to place the child in this favoured setting. That's the, that's the issue in our submission, that's the risk, certainly the risk that Mr. Justice Males, and indeed Lady Justice Black, and I think other members of the Court of Appeal.
And that's a point that feeds into the enterprise risk theory, you know, for perfectly good policy reasons, an option which involves a higher risk, apparently, is being selected. So the selection of that option, if it doesn't create the risk, at any rate contributes to the risk.
That's another thing over which, as far as I know, we don't have the evidence as to whether the risk of abuse is actually greater, or has been shown to be greater, in foster care than in institutional care. Most of us would be quite surprised, bearing in mind the very large number of cases of institutional abuse that have come to light...
Yes.
And the comparatively small number of cases of foster care abuse that have come to light. Now, of course, that may be for all sorts of reasons that we know nothing of, but again, it's difficult for us to accept as a matter of fact that the risk of one is greater than the risk of the other.
Well, my lady, I can see that, which is why one, what I'm engaging, attempting to do is to identify the principles and how, aside from the policy factors which did play their part in KLB, how those principles were analysed by the judge in this case, by eight of the judges in this case.
You appreciate there's a contradiction. You know, you can't at one and the same time say, well, it's riskier to have them in foster care, so local authorities will stop doing that, and on the other hand, say that we just don't know what the risks are, one way or the other.
Well, it's never going to be possible to have evidence about those risks for the reasons I've given, so the issue, I suppose, is whether the judge is entitled to stand back and take a view about it based on the judge's impression of the matter, and that's what the judge did. It's not submitted he was wrong to do that, and in our submission he was right. May I continue my reference to KLB? I just reached paragraph 21, where it was said in Sagas that the inquiry is a functional one, what must always occur is a search for the total relationship of the parties. In Sagas, the court held that the central question is, in this functional inquiry, quote, is whether the person who has been engaged to perform services is performing them as a person in business on their own right, end quote. This way of putting the question reflects the type of enterprise that Sagas was concerned with, namely a for-profit enterprise. In the case at Barr, we're concerned with non-profit enterprise, the government administration of foster care system. In this context, the focus of the inquiry will always, sorry, will be simply on whether the tort visa was acting, quote, "on his own account" or acting on behalf of the employer. So there again, plainly echoes of the, well, echoes, it's the same feature of the analysis in Christian Brothers and Cox. Paragraph 22, reference to the question of control, and about six lines down, control is not the sole consideration. Further down, control is simply one indication of whether a worker is acting on behalf of his or her employer, it's not itself determinative of whether vicarious liability is appropriate. So again, we would submit, in terms of the criteria that are now to be applied by this court, not identical but similar in the analysis in KLB, no reference specifically to the issue of integration into the business organisation of the defendant, but aside from that issue, the analysis in our submission is very similar. The conclusions of the judge appear at paragraphs 23 to 26. Might I ask the court to read those, please? But before I do so, I identify that 24 is really the paragraph that deals with the specific point I'm making at the moment, which is that there are very good reasons why it is vital that the local authority does not exercise day-to-day control over the actions of the foster carers. And 26 picks up the two public policy issues that were being considered a moment ago. a moment ago. Lady, that analysis was, as I've said, adopted and approved by Mr Justice Miles and by each of the judges in the Court of Appeal, who were unanimous on the issue of vicarious liability, our submission is that it is correct, and that it should be adopted here. Followed.
This question of how much interference is, is a very interesting and nuanced one, isn't it? Because it would not surprise me if local authorities weren't quite prescriptive with foster parents in relation, as I think I mentioned yesterday, to such things as diet, the sort of food that the children got, in relation to whether or not the foster parents were to smoke or allow smoking in the household, whether or not the foster parents, what forms of discipline the foster parents were allowed to use. It would, I would guess that these days, local authorities will be pretty prescriptive about all of those things. So the borderline between the two is not as clear-cut as seems to be implied by these paragraphs.
My lady, the, the difficulty is that, I, I appreciate, of course, that whatever this court decides is going to have ramifications for claims that arise in a different period of time, but the fact is that this case concerns events that occurred in the mid-eighties, mid to late eighties. The fact is that there was unchallenged expert evidence about the parameters of the relationship between the authority and the foster carers, and those matters, whilst I have no reason to doubt that they are features today, and for all I know, may result in a different view being taken about certain aspects of these proceedings, they were not, so far as the evidence in this case goes, features then.
But you would accept that the local authority, because of its parental responsibility, which was not the term used in those days, but it's what they had, would be entitled to be, should they think it correct and in the children's best interest, would be entitled to extract undertakings from foster parents in relation to matters such as diet, discipline, smoking?
Yes.
To take three obvious examples, there will be others.
Yes, I, I, obviously, the undertaking under the boarding out regulations is relatively basic, and no reason to make the submission that it wasn't within the power of the authority to amend it, indeed, but, but, but this ultimately is a, well, as I've said, is a case that they needed to be decided on, the, the evidence that there was about what was actually happening at the time.
You, you've been addressing this, and I quite understand why, on, on the basis, really, of a binary choice between, on the one hand, foster care, and on the other, institutional care. But we can stick to the 1980s, but in fact, situation is much the same today-
Yes.
-unless I'm much mistaken. Are those, that there are really only two in the middle, and there are quite a range of options, aren't there?
Well, to be added, importantly, to be added to the list is placement back with the parent, family or friend.
At one end is to be added, replacement with the families, and whether the kind of supervision of domestic habits or discipline that we've just been talking about is exercised there or not, I have absolutely no idea, but it might be different. And at the other end, what's the, I mean, what is in practice the first aim, at any rate, for very small children, and has been for the last twenty years?
Yes, but, yes, adoption, but that, that, yes, that, that's-
Which of course removes all question.
Oh, indeed.
But adoption is, of course, usually preceded by a, a period of foster care, usually with different people from the prospective adopters, and then, of course, a period-
Yep.
-with the prospective adopters.
But the reason why adoption is, is regarded as desirable, if there aren't reasons against it, and particularly with, with older children, where some contact with the parent need to be maintained, it often simply isn't practical, nor should it be. But the reason why it's regarded as preferable is precisely because it provides a substitute for-
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It, it is entirely consistent with the, all of, if, if one treats as, as a category the child growing up in a family, and includes within that both the foster family or the natural family, or indeed friends of the family, a family of friends, then it, it's entirely correct to say that that has always been the preferred option. Felicity Schofield makes the point there was a period, perhaps, I think she says in the sixties, when there was a swing in favour of residential care, but, but given that the 1948 Act included the preference we've seen, that must have been a relatively short-lived thing. Beyond that, certainly, we would accept that, and that, that's part, it's part of our case, it, it's why one needs to be careful about changing the law in a way that may act as a disincentive for foster care to be used in the way that it has been hitherto, and indeed placement with natural parents. I'll leave control and move on to the second factor, which is the issue of whether the foster carer is acting on behalf of the local authority when it accommodates the child pursuant to the Act. Our submission is no, and again, there are two reasons. The first is, to borrow the words of Chief Justice McLachlan in KLB, the foster carers fulfil a public goal, but they do so in an independent manner. That was very much the analysis of Mr Justice Miles as well. Might I take the court to what he said on this issue, core bundle and electronic bundle, page 145? Paragraph 177, halfway down, where his lordship is dealing with the criteria emerging from Christian Brothers, of course, the case was decided, has been observed prior to the decision of this court in Cox. Having dealt with the, the first of those, he says, four lines down, the foster parent does not provide family life on behalf of the local authority, rather the, the local authority promotes the welfare of the child by placing it in a home where it can be expected to benefit from family life. The provision of, and participation in family life is not part of the activity of the local authority. Foster parents are not in any material degree under the control of the local authority, and we would add to-
Those aren't necessarily mutually exclusive. I mean, the local authority, on one view, has a responsibility to ensure that the child receives family life, if, if it's achievable, isn't it?
There was that obligation, it was, there was the statutory preferences, I've called it in the 48 Act, it's gone, but I certainly accept as a matter of social care practice, because it emerges from the expert evidence, it, it was the preferred option.
Yeah, so, so it, it comes within the gamut of responsibilities on, on the part of the local authority. Of course, foster parents are acting in, in the public good, as Chief Justice McLachlan put it, but, I mean, why, because they're acting in the public good, can they not also be said to be acting on behalf of the local authority in that they are the medium through which the responsibility of the local authority is discharged?
Well, as I said earlier, perhaps the answer is often it depends what the, the words mean, but, but, but i- i- in our submission, the local authority doesn't act on behalf of, that foster care doesn't act on behalf of the local authority in the provision of family life, because that isn't something that the local authority is capable of providing. One needs to draw on, again, it will, it's a point that will emerge later on in our submissions. There is a dividing line, we say, between the first, well, they're not in this order, but between the two options in the relevant legislation, which are placing the child with the foster carer and placing the child with the family, even though under a care order, on the one hand, and placing the child in a maintained home, that's to say, a local authority care home, and a voluntary home on the other. Those are two different situations.
I quite appreciate that, but, I mean, i- if the local authority has a responsibility to try to achieve a family life for a child in its care, I'm not so sure that it can be said with absolute clarity that when it places a child in foster care, that the foster care is not acting on behalf of the local authority in fulfilling the discharge of its obligation to provide the child with family care. Well, I mean, I'm simply expressing a doubt that I have, and I'll obviously need to think further about it, but I just wonder whether it's possible to compartmentalise these concepts in, in quite as strict a fashion as, perhaps, as we've done in the past.
Well, my lord, can I, can I move on to my second point, in the hope that it helps to answer the, that, that observation? If one looks at the other cases, and of course, as Lord Phillips said, vicarious liability was, was on the move in 2012, and there have been significant developments, developments over the last five or six years, both with that case, with the case of Cox, and with the proceeding Court of Appeal case of E. And in, in, certainly in the cases concerning ministers of religion, E and the Christian Brothers case, on the issue of whether the tort faisa was acting on behalf of the defendant, a crucial, we would submit, feature was that there was a shared mission, one might say a zeal, but certainly a purpose, shared between the tort faisa and the defendant, which fulfilled this, perhaps somewhat nebulous, issue, question of whether one is acting on behalf of the Might I refer, please, to the Christian Brothers case on this point, which is behind, I think, bear with me, it's fif- fifteen, it's page 1034. And this is, as one sees from the subheading at the bottom, right at the end of Lord Phillips' analysis of the stage one issues, where he is reaching his conclusions. Paragraph 56, in the context of vicarious liability, the relationship between the teaching brothers in the institute has many of the elements and all of the essential elements of the relationship between an employer, employer and employee. One, the institute was subdivided into a hierarchical structure and conducted its activity as if it were a corporate body, and I'll mention that again when we come to integration. Two, the teaching activity of the brothers was undertaken because the provincial directed the brothers to undertake it. True, it is that the brothers entered into contracts of employment with the Middlesbrough defendants, but they did say because the provincial required them to do so. Three, the teaching activity undertaken by the brothers was in furtherance of the objective or mission of the institute. Four, the manner in which the brother teachers were obliged to conduct themselves as teachers was dictated by the institute's rules. And one notes at paragraph 58, that Lord Phillips reached the conclusion that these factors, in fact, made the relationship closer than one of employer and employer, and I think I'm right in saying also that in Cox, the Court of Appeal had reached the same conclusion in respect of the, the, the binding, that the sentence, how the sentence bound the prisoner to the prison authority was again closer than a relationship of an employer and employee, and those are the sorts of features which are in our submission relevant to the issue of whether one is acting on behalf of the other. And there is, we say, a complete absence here, as indeed Lord Justice Tomlinson said, a complete absence of any sort of analogy between the circumstances that arose in those cases in this respect, and the relationship we are concerned with here. If one considers it in, in this way, well, what is the motivation of the foster carer? Is, is it a shared mission or shared purpose to ensure the protection of children? The answer is, we submit, no. So far as the local authority is concerned, it acts in that way because it's under a statutory duty to do so.
But that point was made in Cox, obviously, the prisoner didn't have a shared mission with the, with the prison.
I, I, I accept the, the shared mission points i- is a feature of the religious case, I accept that.
But why do you suppose foster parents go in for fostering?
I, I was going to make the submission, albeit again, not based on evidence, that the, the motivation of the foster carer is to look after children in the public interest-
Exactly.
-and no doubt, perhaps, in some cases-
A shared mission to look after children whose own families can't look after them for themselves.
I'm sure that motivates the foster carer, but the local authorities, eh, involvement-
And that's the local authority's statutory duty, so isn't that a shared mission?
Yes, but it's, it's a creature of statute, it acts pursuant to a statutory duty, it doesn't act pursuant to, to a mission in anything like the way the, the brothers, the Christian brothers do, or the Catholic diocese did in the case of E.
Would a conscientious local authority not have a mission to ensure that children in their care, irrespective of any statutory duty, would enjoy family life? Surely that would be a goal of any responsible local authority.
Well, I don't know that one can take the statutory duty out of it when one's talking about a local authority, that's the source-
Well, I'm not asking you to take it out of it, but I'm asking you to consider whether, independent of the statutory duty, that would not be a goal of a responsible local authority in contemporary society.
Well, it's, it's required to be there, it's, it's what they, it's what they are, one of the things they are there to do. I, I fully accept that.
You can call it a statutory mission, if you like, but it's a purpose, which, at least on one view, is shared with the foster carers, isn't it?
We, we don't accept that there is a shared purpose between, between the foster carer and the local authority in, i- i- in anything like the close way that there is between the, the, the brother and the institute. I'll move on then to the question of integration into the local authority's business activity. Now, this is very much put at the forefront of my learned friend's argument, and he says that the foster carers are integrated into the activity of the authority because they are discharging the local authority's statutory duty to accommodate and maintain the child. That carries with it certain difficulties, and I perceive my learned friend appreciates that, because it means that the child who is placed back with their parent pursuant to the same statutory obligation or statutory discretion would also be the subject of vicarious liability. And so the, in our submission, surprising submission is made, that subject to it being fair, just and reasonable, a local authority would be vicariously liable for, without fault, for harm caused by a parent to a child with whom it had placed the child under the care order pursuant, if it were done now, to the statutory preference in section 22C of the 1989 Act. I say it's surprising, because that's not an argument that was ever advanced before the judge or the Court of Appeal. It's not foreshadowed in the claimant's written case, and it seems to be inconsistent with the submission that it's not necessary to consider independently whether it's fair, just and reasonable to impose vicarious liability in circumstances where the criteria are otherwise met. But aside from those complaints, it is in our submission quite impossible to see a natural parent of a child as integrated into the organisational structure of a local authority, or indeed acting on behalf of a local authority when it looks after its own children. So we say that must be wrong. We accept that if it's right, a consequence is that there would be vicarious liability for parents, but we say that cannot be correct, and what integration means is something rather more than merely exercising a function which is a statutory duty of the local authority. Our submissions on the issue of integration are these, we accept, of course- Our submissions on the issue of integration are these. We accept, of course, that a local authority is not immune from a finding of this sort because it doesn't operate commercial activities. That's plainly right. The point was made in Cox, and there's no, and indeed K L B. As we just observed, as I observed in the various claimants' case, it was important to Lord Phillips that the institute was subdivided into a hierarchical structure and conducted its activities as if it were a corporate body. And indeed, in the case of E, Lord Justice Ward spoke about the priest being wholly integrated into the organisational structure of the church and adopted the words of Lord Denning, that he was part and parcel of the defendant's enterprise and not just, quote, accessory to it. And I won't take you to that, but the reference is Electronic Bundle seven, six, four. Now, we, of course, accept that the local authority is corporate in structure and operates like a business, but we do not accept that the foster carer is in any way incorporated into that structure. We, we, we doubt that any foster carer would see themselves as incorporated into this structure of the authority, far less any natural parent. And we remind the court that you were taken to the view of the substitute family worker Fiona Becker, who, right at the end of her second statement, said that "the authority regarded the foster carers as a resource on which to be drawn as and when needed". We also, for your lordship's note, mentioned Jane Austin's statement at paragraph thirty-five, Electronic Bundle four, four, three, where she observed, and I don't think you've been shown this, that some foster carers would maintain employ, additional outside employment, nothing to do with fostering, which, we submit, all suggests a lack of integration into the authority and suggests that the analogy is very much with the independent contractor rather than the M V E. Also on this point, we make the point that we've already made in the context of acting on behalf of, that, again, the local authority, of course, cannot itself provide family life. It needs to use external suppliers. It needs to use outsiders if it concludes that foster care boarding out is the right option of those that are given to the authority by section twenty-four of the Act. And if foster carers don't provide the service, then boarding out is not going to happen. So all consistent, we say, with the analogy with an independent contractor. And I, I, I said earlier, one, one can contrast that to the position of the local authority who, for whatever reason, concludes that the child is better placed in a, in a maintained care home. It is easy to see, we submit, that a care home is, is, into those who operate care homes are integrated into the business activity of the local authority. It's a very different situation with the foster carer. Finally, on this point, the point is taken against us by reference to what my lord, Lord Reed, said in Cox. Might I just turn up this reference? It's seven oh nine, Electronic No, I'm sorry, that, that can't be the right reference for Cox. Just bear with me a moment. It is. Yes, thank you. It's the electronic, yes, it is seven oh nine, Bundle Reference one, two, one. Paragraph twenty-nine, where my lord said, picking it up between letters D and E, "It results in an extension of the scope of vicarious liability beyond the responsibility of an employer for the acts or missions and emissions of its employees in the course of their employment, but not to the extent of imposing such liability where tort visa's activities are", these are the important words, "entirely attributable, excuse me, entirely attributable to the conduct of a recognizably independent business of his own or a third party". Now, one needs to adapt those words to suit the context. It, it's said that we can't possibly say that the circumstances here fall within that, but in our submission, one can. If one changes the wording to fit the context and asks whether the activities of the foster carers are entirely attributable to the provision of a recognizably independent service of their own, then in our submission, they fall squarely within that.
Can I, can I just mention, it's, it's casting a sort of sideways light on this. I was looking this morning at a case where a foster parent brought proceedings against the local authority for failing to provide her with adequate training or equipment to deal with a child. The child was, essentially, it was rather like a nurse's back injury case.
Yes.
It was a disabled child. And the, it was simply a striking out application in the High Court, so it's not a, it's not an authority of, of much importance. But it was interesting that that sort of a claim was, was brought, and the judge, in the light of evidence about the training that is given to foster parents by local authorities and the provision of, the practice of providing equipment to parents, and the fact also that there was payment being made, described them as quasi-employees and declined to strike out the, the claim. That's, that's as far as it goes. But I thought that, it, it's, it's quite interesting to think about that situation. The, if local, I mean, it's quite difficult to, I, I think my, my, my reaction to it was, it's difficult to, it's difficult to argue with the view that the local authority must have a duty of care, must, must be under a duty of care towards the foster parent in a situation of that kind. And, you know, that's why they go in presumably for training, provision of equipment and, and so forth, so that the foster parent is able to cope properly with the child being allocated to him and do, achieve what the local authority hopes that they'll achieve. And that doesn't sit very well with the view that the foster parent is simply a resource, providing some sort of independent service who can be called on as and when, as and when necessary.
I certainly share your lordship's view that i-it would be difficult to envisage that a local authority would not owe a foster carer a duty of care in those situations once it had bought itself into that relationship by providing training. If it was a back injury case, manual handling training or something, it's impossible to see that there would be no duty. But we would certainly quibble with the suggestion that the duty was one that was imposed because the relationship was one of employment or quasi-employment. It would be unnecessary to go that far in order to establish the duty. And so one wonders why it was necessary for the judge, or why the judge made that observation. But, but, yes.
Am I right in thinking the only document we have which evidences the relationship at any rate in this case between the local authority and the, and the foster parent is that single document we looked at? Or is there a sort of foster parents handbook?
No, there was evidence that the local authority didn't keep copies of its guidance in the eighties. When it was replaced, no past copies were kept.
Do we have, I mean, is the currently a, a standard handbook which is given to all the foster parents, which sets out what foster parents are expected to do, what their obligations are?
I don't know whether that's the document that's attached to the, to the, to the witness statement of Miss Austin. There's no, certainly what's attached to that is a Nottinghamshire document. I, 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 I don't know whether, I'm, I'm being told by Mr. White's man that there's no standard national document which would necessarily apply in all cases. But, which page is it, Chris?
Which page is it, please?
Four, four, nine.
Four, four, eight, actually.
Four, four, eight. That's described as a looked-after-children strategy, two thousand and twelve to fifteen. But the, the, the evidence about the relationship between them comes from what Miss Becker says, what Miss Os-, no, not what Miss Austin says, what Miss Becker says and what the expert, Miss Schofield, says. That was the evidence on which the judge relied, and he didn't hear from either of those. He didn't hear from Miss Becker. He heard from Miss Schofield, but only for her evidence about the issues of direct negligence to be challenged, not, not on the matters that appear in her report that's in the core bundle for this case. I'm conscious of the time. May I deal ve-very briefly with the final one of the criteria that I intend to deal with? I'm going to say nothing about deep pockets for reasons. My lord, Lord Reed expressed memorably with the phrase, "They insure because they're liable, they're not liable because they insure". But so far as the risk is concerned, back to Cox, please, briefly, page one, uh, page seven oh seven, paragraph twenty-three, we just pick up towards the end of that, perhaps before the quotation from Dubai aluminium, the observation that, picking up after the colon, "Since the risk of an individual behaving negligently or indeed committing an intentional wrong is a fact of life, anyone who employs others to carry out activities is likely to create the risk of their having, behaving tortuously within the field of activity assigned to them. The essential idea is that the defendant should be liable for torts that may fairly be regarded as risks of his business activity, whether they're committed for the purposes of furthering those activities or not". And our only submission on that is to remind the court how Lord Justice Tomlinson dealt with it, what, which was, which we say was correct on the facts of this case, which is that what was missing here was any connection between the control and the risk. In other words, the abuse, abuse, if it were to occur, would inevitably occur in circumstances where, it would inevitably occur during the day-to-day operation of family life, which were the very circumstances in which the authority was not exercising control. And that was part of his reason for reaching the conclusion he did. Those are our submissions on the criteria. Might I deal, obviously, as I've said, it's necessary to stand back from those, and rather than to treat them shavishly as if they were the words of a statute and so on. But, but having considered them, our submission is that standing back, the right conclusion is that the analogy here is with an independent contractor and not an employee. Now, I pick up on three points which arose in submissions made by, well, two of them arose in submissions made by my learned friend. One is a point I'd like to make in relation to the observations of my lord, Lord Reed, in Cox at seven oh nine. And it follows on from the passage I read a moment ago in paragraph twenty-nine about the activities being attributable to the independent business. And it's this observation, "An important consequence of that extension is to enable the law to maintain previous levels of protection for the victims of torts, notwithstanding changes in the legal relationship between enterprises and members of their workforce, which may be motivated by factors which have nothing to do with the nature of the enterprise's activities or the attendant risks". The short point we make is that there is really no question of the legal relationship between a local authority and a foster carer, having changed over the years in the way that certain workplace relationships has, have. No, no protection has been lost by any change in that relationship. And whilst that may have been a relevant factor in the case of Cox, it doesn't apply on the facts here. The next point is the question of the disadvantaged position that it is submitted a child in foster care has as against a child in a local authority care home. It is, of course, accepted that a child in a local authority care home is going to have a no-fault remedy against the authority because the tortuous employee will almost certainly be an employee of the local authority, and there will be vicarious liability. That submission was made to Mr. Justice Miles, and he dealt with it, in fact, twice, because the same point was made in relation to vicarious liability and non-delegable duty. And we submit that his approach to it was absolutely correct. And so I wonder if I might ask the court to turn it up. It's, the first is paragraph one, seven, nine, which is on page one, four, five. This is in the context of vicarious liability. Where his lordship said, "Mr. Davy, for the claimant submitted that the most significant reason why vicarious liability should be imposed in this case is that without it and subject to the non-delegable duty, a child in foster care would be left without redress against a local authority where a child placed in a residential home would have redress", reference to Lister. "This, he submitted, was an anomaly which ought not to exist in circumstances where the child has no control over the local authority's decision whether to place him or her in a foster home or residential home. I accept that a child in foster care will not have redress against the local authority on the basis of vicarious liability, whereas a child in a residential home will have. But this is not an anomaly that needs to be corrected by an unprincipled extension of the law of vicarious liability. Rather, it is a reflection of the genuinely different circumstances of life in a foster home and children's residential home respectively, and the application of what are now established principles to determine the circumstances in which vicarious liability exists". And then to paragraph two oh five, Electronic Bundle Reference one, five, three. This is where his lordship is dealing with his reasons for concluding that it would not be fair, just and reasonable to impose the non-delegable duty. Third, there is, in my view, a fundamental distinction between the placement with the foster parents and the placement with the children's, in a children's home. The former provides the experience of family life, which is the cultural norm of our society. The latter does not for the reasons so compellingly explained in K L B. It's inherent in foster care placements that the local authority does not have the same control over the day-to-day lives of children in foster care that it has over children in residential care. This, this is a benefit to the children in foster care and is necessary in order to give them the experience of family life, which is the purpose of fostering. As fostering necessarily involves a release of the control which the local authority has over the child, it may in a sense be regarded inherently risky. But with that risk comes the benefits which the child, sorry, which life in a children's home cannot provide, provided that all necessary reasonable care has been taken to ensure that foster parents and the placement are suitable. Those are risks which will generally be worth running in order to obtain a child the benefit of family life. I do not think that members of the public would struggle to understand that different considerations apply to the legal responsibilities of local authorities in the two situations, or would regard it as unacceptable for liability to exist in one case and not the other. Accordingly, I do not accept Mr. Davy's submission. Described as the strongest argument in favour of a non-delegable duty, namely that a child placed in a foster placement orders a matter of policy to have the same no-fault remedy against a local authority as a child placed in a residential home who is abused by the local authority employee. Again, our submission is that that was entirely correct. Mentioned was made yesterday of my lady's observation in Woodland about, I may have named Joan Abigail, Belinda and Clara, three girls who went to different schools and were all injured during school swimming lessons. And the point was made in our submission entirely correctly that the man on the underground might find it difficult.
Probably the person.
The person. It says man. I checked this morning, to my surprise.
Oh, well.
Hitherto correction, having up.
Well spotted.
Entirely correct observation that the person on the underground might find it difficult to understand why the child at the independent school would have the contractual remedy, the child at the state school that had the swimming pool on site and staffed by employees would have the vicarious liability remedy. But unless there was a non-delegable duty, the child who out, the school that outsourced the swimming lessons wouldn't. And we accept that, and we accept that anomaly exists, an anomaly would have existed if Cox had been decided the other way because the injured person would have been in precisely the same factual situation, whether she had been injured by a negligent prisoner or negligent employee. But this is... But this is quite different in our submission. In all of those cases, the factual circumstances of those children are essentially the same. What is missing is the clear distinction which Lord Justice, Mr. Justice Miles correctly drew, we say, between the fact of life for a child in a foster home and for those who are accommodated in a voluntary or community home. As he observed, he speaks of the member of the public being able to understand that distinction. And our submission is member of the public or person on the underground, that is an easily understandable distinction and one that entirely justifies the differing treatment which they receive. And there is no anomaly in our submission. Before leaving remedies, it's perhaps an obvious point, and I think I've made it, but this claimant did have other fault, well, a no-fault remedy once the assault was established against the foster carers. Now, of course, many foster carers will not be able to meet a judgment in circumstances like that, but some will. Those that own their own homes will be able to satisfy a judgment in many cases. And it shouldn't be forgotten, and I'm sure it isn't, that this was a 10-day trial. All of the evidence in which was directed towards the claimant trying to establish that those responsible for the decisions about where she should be placed, returning her to her mother's care and so on, were negligent, as the point was made yesterday, that in fact, the social workers who decided to place the claimant in these two foster placements, their negligence was not an issue in the trial because even their own expert had not supported that claim, which was pleaded. And so it was the subject of an application for summary judgment at an early stage. But 10 days of, virtually 10 days of evidence at the trial, social worker after social worker going in and out of the witness box, cross-examined, accused of being negligent, and the judge acquitted all of them of negligence in his judgment. The no-fault remedies plainly would have, didn't have much to do with the evidence and really arose at a submission stage. So the claimant had her audible voice, she would have her audible voice in a claim against the foster carers. And the fact that she was unable to prove negligence of the foster carers to relevant standard is not, to borrow the words of Lord Justice Ma, Mr. Justice Miles, "A reason for an unprincipled extension of the law."
Can I ask you, the courts below, I see, although, although the foster parents were, it was found to be proved that they had abused the claimant, their names were anonymised in the judgments. I wonder if you had any attitude towards that question?
Yes. What happened there was that the, when the judgment, when the judge reserved judgment, he said he was, and I think there's a paragraph at the end of his judgment to this effect.
Page 204, yeah.
Yes. He was going to impose anonymity. He imposed it at the beginning because, of course, he didn't know which way his finding was going to be. He then left it on the basis anybody who wished to challenge that anonymity could do so. Relatively recently, that anonymity was challenged, and the challenge was successful. But for reasons which I don't, I don't know, and so can't go into, it's the view of the appellant's side of things that there should nevertheless not be direct reference to them in these proceedings. There's nothing mysterious about it. I'm not trying to take any point. I just don't know what the reasons are.
Can I explain that I discussed this with the appellant herself? We thought that since these proceedings are, in one sense, broadcast, it was not going to advance things to name the individuals. And the claimant took that view, which seemed to us to be a sensible view. But in any judgment, it's a matter for this court as to what it does in its judgment, of course, because they are, their names are on it.
I'll move on, please, to the one issue concerning the non-delegable duty, which I'm going to deal with, which is the question of whether the fourth of Lord Sumption's five criteria, if that's the right word, is met. Can we return briefly to paragraph 23 of Woodland, which is, begins at 1077? And the relevant passage is, paragraph 23 on 1153. You've already been taken to this. The five defining features, which is Lord Sumption's word, are set out. It had never been, can I make clear, the defendant's case that one was not met. The defendant accepted that both aspects of two were met. There was a challenge to three, but that challenge failed and was not the subject of any appeal, nor was subject to the deliberate injury point, which is perhaps a freestanding point, subject to that, nor was there any challenge to the fifth criterion. But the defendant did take the point both before the judge and the Court of Appeal that the fourth was not met. The defendant has delegated to a third party some function which is an integral part of the positive duty which he has assumed towards the claimant. And the third party is exercising for the purpose of the function thus delegated to him, the defendant's custody or care of the claimant and the element of control that goes with it. And the submission in respect of this is, is as follows. As Lord Sumption describes in a passage I'll take you to in a moment, "One difference between those functions which are an integral part of the positive duty and those that are not is that in the former case, the defendant has assumed a duty itself to perform the functions, whereas in the latter case, the defendant's obligation is limited to arranging its performance." And our submission is that the function of providing for children to be accommodated and maintained pursuant to section 24 of the 1980 Act is in the latter category. And it is in that category because it is not a function that the local authority can itself perform. So I'll develop that relatively briefly, if I may. One needs to start with the duty of care. It had never been disputed that the defendant owed the claimant a common law duty of care. It was always admitted in the defence. And the discharge of a common law duty of care involves a defendant in a case like this fulfilling a number of functions. We say not all of those functions will be an integral part of the positive duty that the local authority assumes towards the claimant. Some will and some will not. That much, we say, is clear from Woodland itself. If one turns the page, I'll come back to paragraph 24. But at paragraph 25, Lord Sumption is addressing the issue of whether it's fair, just and reasonable to impose the duty and concludes that it is. But one of the issues he addresses there is at paragraph 25.3, where he says, "This is not an open-ended liability, for there are important limitations on the range of matters for which a school or educational authority assumes non-delegable duties. They are liable for the negligence of independent contractors only if, and so far, as the latter are performing functions which the school has assumed for itself a duty to perform, generally in school hours and on school premises, or other times or places where the school may carry out its educational functions. In the absence of negligence of their own," this is to say the defendant's own, "for example, in the selection of contractors, they will not be liable for the negligence of independent contractors where on analysis their own duty is not to perform the relevant function, but only to arrange for its performance. They will not be liable for the defaults of independent contractors providing extracurricular activities outside school hours, such as school trips and holidays, nor will they be liable for negligence of those to whom no control over the child has been delegated, such as bus drivers or the theatres, zoos, museums, to which children may be taken by school staff in school hours," to take some of the examples canvassed in argument by Lord Justice Lawes in his dissenting judgment. And examples appear in paragraph 24 of cases in which the finding was rightly, Lord Sumption said, that the function in question was not part of the positive duty because the obligation was only to arrange for performance. And the two examples are A, and the Ministry of Defence was being referred to, where the MOD was not liable for the negligence of a hospital with whom it had contracted to treat servicemen and their families because the MOD had not assumed a personal responsibility to carry out the treatment, perhaps obviously only an obligation to arrange it, and on very different facts, but to the same effect, the case of Mitten and Woods referred to over the page in the middle of the upper half of the page, where the school was under a duty to arrange for the transportation of disabled children, but not a duty itself actually to transport them. And so there was no liability where the independent contractor taxi driver negligently dropped them in an unsafe place. So one needs to identify the scope of the duty and to ask the question whether the function in question is one which the local authority had retained an obligation to perform. One starts with the statutory duty, but of course, those statutory duties do not themselves give rise to actions for damages for breach of statutory duty, nor are they directly transposed into common law duties. The duty at all times is a duty to exercise reasonable care to avoid or prevent the child from suffering personal injury. And it is in that context, or the context of that duty, that one needs to identify the function in question here. And I don't think it's an issue, in fact, that the function in question here is the accommodation and maintenance of the child. So the issue is whether that function is so integral, such an integral part of the local authority's duty, that it assumes an obligation to perform it itself rather than merely to arrange for its performance. And our submission is that it is not, and it is not, because it is not an obligation that it is possible for the local authority to perform. One again contrasts here the position of the local authority who decides exercising its general duty under section 18 of the Act, that the right place for the child to be maintained is in a children's home. That is a function which the local authority can and does perform. We would see no difficulty with the argument that providing for accommodation there was an integral part of the local authority's duty. And so if, for example, it outsourced that provision to a voluntary home under the other section of the Act, it may owe a non-delegable duty. But boarding out is different. It's in the same category as placing the child with the parent. It is not something the authority can perform, and it cannot therefore be said that the local authority has retained an obligation to perform it. That submission was accepted by Lord Justice Tomlinson and by Lord Justice Black, and in our submission, they were correct. Unless I can insist further, those are my submissions. My learned friend will have some more.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
Thank you, my lady. I'm going to address you on the issue of whether an assault breaches a non-delegable duty of care. And our submission is that the non-delegable duty identified by Lord Sumption in Woodland was a duty not only to take care, but to ensure that care was taken. And that while Woodland dealt with extending the duty to contractors, it didn't in any way forecast the change in the content of the duty. And so Lord Justice Burnett, who dealt with this point in the Court of Appeal, was right to find that a duty of care breached by negligence was not breached by an assault. And I wish to develop this argument by making three points. First.
Just say that again, will you?
That a duty of care, a duty to take care, is breached by a negligent act, but not by an assault. So in this case, as my learned friend, Mr. Ford, indicated, we had a significant amount of evidence about what the social workers did. They owe the duty to act with care. That is a duty to take reasonable precautions, for example, to prevent a third party from assaulting the child. And that would be the kind of checks they would make of a foster placement. But it is not breached by the assault itself. And I advance three arguments. First, that trespass to the person, a deliberate or intentional tort, is different to a duty of care which is breached by negligence, because they arise in different circumstances. And whether you describe them as a duty or obligation, because they arise from different circumstances, they are generically different. And when I do that, I will try to answer Lord Hughes's questions yesterday as to why. Second, that no-fault liability for assaults, which is what we are dealing with here, is appropriately dealt with by the principle, the doctrine of vicarious liability, as it has been developed both in this jurisdiction and in the Commonwealth. And if one thinks of the current analysis, stage one and stage two, stage one applies where you have an employee or someone who is in a position akin to employment. But if we are to create a breach of a non-delegable duty for an assault, and that assault is committed by an independent contractor, you will in effect extend no-fault liability beyond stage one to those drawing on Cox who are truly independent contractors or in a business on their own. If one considers stage two, which has been recently developed in this jurisdiction, and Mohammed, which follows on, and simply reaffirms what was said in Lister, before the institutional defendant is liable for the assault, there has to be a close connection. Now, with a non-delegable duty, of course, the employer owes a non-delegable duty in respect of his employees. And so there is a duty of care which the employee exercises on behalf of the employer. If that duty of care is breached by an assault, an employer will become liable for all assaults of employees irrespective of there being a close connection. And if one thinks of the facts of Mohammed, say you had had a cleaner in the service station who would undoubtedly have been under a duty to take care, a fellow employee had tripped over a mop or spillage, the employer would have been liable. But if the cleaner, who had nothing to do with supervision, punched a fellow employee or even a visitor, despite the absence of close connection, there would be a breach of the non-delegable duty to take care by the assault. The third submission is that if you are saying that a non-delegable duty of care is breached by assault, you are fundamentally changing the content of that duty. It becomes a much stricter form of liability. Not only is it strict in the sense that you cannot delegate it to a third party, but it is strict that you are liable either for injury, however occurring, or alternatively for injury, however inflicted. And I will try and draw that distinction. If I can take, my lady, please, in the authorities' bundle to Collins versus Wilcox.
Just probably do that. Audience, could you just give us to this point in your case?
Yes, my lord.
I only want the reference. I'm not asking you to read it out.
No, no, no. I just had to reach for another file. My lord, this is dealt with in the respondent's case from page 56 through to 63.
Are those pages or paragraphs?
Those are, I hope, the electronic numbering. There was a problem with our case, and I have it separately.
Paragraphs 30.
Paragraphs 30.
30 on the table. 53?
53. Yes, my lord.
Thank you very much.
Collins versus Wilcox is behind tab four. It's the judgment of Lord Gough. And the passage I wish to take you for is on the memory stick at 692. I don't believe that the facts are material, as it's simply the principle which I want to rely on, which is paragraphs, or let's C to D. We are concerned here, we are here concerned primarily with battery. The fundamental principle, plain and incontestable, is that every person's body is inviolate. It has long been established that any touching of another person, however slight, may amount to a battery. So Holt, CJ, held in Cole versus Turner, that the least touching of another in anger is a battery. The breadth of the principle reflects the fundamental nature of the interest protected, as Blackstone wrote in his commentary. fundamental nature of the interest protected. As Blackstone wrote in his commentaries, the law cannot draw the line between the different degrees of violence and therefore totally prohibits the first and lowest stage of it, every man's person being sacred and no other having a right to meddle with it in any the slightest manner. The effect is that everybody is protected, not only against physical injury, but against any form of physical molestation. So, my lady, we all owe a duty not to commit an assault irrespective of any pre-existing relationship which might give rise to a duty of care. And when an employee at a place of employment commits an assault, he breaches that obligation, but it is the same obligation that he would breach if, when he was away from the workplace, he punched a passerby in the street. The obligation not to assault is general. We all owe it, whatever proximity we have with others. When we are talking about a duty of care, that duty depends on there being a relationship of proximity between the person who owes the duty and the person who suffers injury. And we can see that quite clearly if we return to Woodland and Lord Sumption's judgment. My learned friend dealt with this in some detail, so I hope not to repeat too much of what he said. But if I can take you to page 1143 on the memory stick and the last part of paragraph five, following the quote from the Canadian decision, guardian ad ligtum. Lord Sumption says, "The expression non-delegable duty has become the conventional way of describing those cases in which the ordinary principle is displaced, and the duty extends beyond being careful to procuring the careful performance of work delegated to others." And so in my submission, he is clearly talking about a duty of care. Now, my learned friend took you to paragraph seven and directed you to the second of the three categories, which give rise to a non-delegable duty. Second, the duty is a positive or affirmative duty to protect a particular class of person against a particular class of risk, and not simply a duty to refrain from acting in a way that foreseeably causes injury. But the point in my submission is that the duty to protect is not absolute. It is a duty to protect by taking reasonable care. And what one should not conflate is the obligation owed, which is to take care, and the fact that an injury is inconsistent. We can see that we are talking not about an absolute duty if we go to page 1145 and we look at the citation from Hughes versus Percival, judgment of Lord Blackburn, that Lord Sumption relies on. And if I may pick up that citation at D, and this was a case about party walls, "The defendant had a right so to utilise the party wall, for it was his property, as well as the plaintiff's. A stranger would have not had such a right." But I think the law cast on the defendant when exercising this right, a duty towards the plaintiff. I do not think that that duty went so far as to require him absolutely to provide that no damage should come to the plaintiff's wall from the use he thus made of it. But I think that duty went far as to require him to see that reasonable skill and care were exercised in those operations which involved the use of a party wall, exposing it to this risk. If such a duty was cast on the defendant, he could not get rid of it, rid of responsibility, by delegating the performance of it to a third party. And so what we see there is a relationship between two parties creates a duty and an obligation, but the duty and the obligation is to take care and is not absolute. And that is acknowledged by Lord Sumption in the following paragraph at 11. Would ask that you read that to yourselves rather than I read it out. My lords, I now wish to take you through some of the case law, because there has been some confusion over this issue, particularly arising from the case of Morris and then the two judgements in Lister of Hobhouse and Lord Millet. But my submission is that the position of Lord Millet has now been preferred and Lord Justice Diplock in Morris, going to the end, as it were, of the trajectory to the case of various claimants. Just so you know where I hope to arrive, if we go to divider 16, no, my apologies, 15, various claimants, and to paragraph 62, memory stick 1034.
Can I just check I'm following this? If, just say, for example, in a hospital, you had an agency nurse, and the agency nurse accidentally poisons a patient by giving the patient the wrong medicine, then there would be a breach of a non-delegable duty of care by the hospital.
Yes.
If the agency nurse deliberately poisoned the patient, there would be no breach.
Yes, that's right.
So the hospital is-
There may be vicarious liability, depending on the precise relationship between the hospital and the agency nurse. But fundamentally, yes, that is the submission that I make. And my submission is that that is properly dealt with by vicarious liability. And the example you give, the agency nurse, would be, they'll be vicarious liable for her as there would be an employee. But if one takes that proposition to situations more distant from the defendant, if you're liable for assaults, you are rendering all of the Commonwealth and English, British case law on vicarious liability nuggetry. I mean, we've been wasting the last five or six years in these cases. And I draw comfort from that, from what is said by Lord Phillips when discussing stage two, the close connection at paragraph 62. And he says this, "Where an employee commits a tortious act, the employer will be vicariously liable if the act was done in the course of employment of the employee. This plainly covers the situation where the employee does something that he's employed to do in a manner that is negligent. In that situation, the necessary connection between his relationship with his employer and his tortious act will be established. Stage two of the test will be satisfied. The same is true where the relationship between the defendant and tortfeeser is akin to an employer and employee, where the tortfeeser does something that he's required or requested to do pursuant to his relationship with the defendant in a manner that is negligent. Stage two of the test is likely to be satisfied. But sexual abuse, which is the intentional deliberate tort, the trespass to the person, can never be a negligent way of performing such a requirement. In what circumstances, then, can an act of sexual abuse give rise to vicarious liability? And we know the answer. Where you entrust care of a child to someone and they misuse that opportunity, you create the risk, and so there is the close connection." While I'm here, if I could ask you to look at paragraph 74 on page 1038, because we will have to deal with Lister, what Lord Phillips says, "It's not easy to deduce from Lister the precise criteria that will give rise to vicarious liability for sexual abuse. The test of close connection approved by all tells one thing about the nature of the connection. Lord Clyde and Lord Hobhouse found it significant that the tortfeeser's employment involved the exercising the care for the victim. Only Lord Millet expressly endorsed the importance of the Canadian decisions attached to creation of risk. This has, however, been identified as of significance in the most of the cases that have followed." And so in my submission, we are really now in a position where Lord Millet's approach in Lister has been preferred. That is, as it were, the end of the trajectory. The beginning is the case of Latang versus Cooper, which is in your bundles at nine, memory stick eight, nine, three. It's a decision about limitation prior to stubbings. And in the case involved a road track injury where the defendant had driven over the claimant while sunbathing. She had failed to bring her case within three years, and so sought to bring it within the six-year period for deliberate torts. And at that, if we could go to memory stick 900, we have Lord Denning considering the different causes of action. And what he says at E is this, "The truth is that the distinction between trespass and case is obsolete. We have a different subdivision altogether. Instead of dividing actions for personal injury into trespass, direct damage, or case consequential damage, we divide the causes of action now according as the defendant did the injury intentionally or unintentionally. If one man intentionally applies force directly to another, the plaintiff has a cause of action in assault or battery, or if you please to describe it trespass to the person." And then he makes the same citation from Holt as Gough, Lord Gough. "If he does not inflict injury intentionally, but only unintentionally, the plaintiff has no cause of action to day trespass. His only cause of action is in negligence, and then only on proof of want of reasonable care. The plaintiff cannot prove want of reasonable care. He may have no cause of action at all. Thus, it is not enough nowadays for the plaintiff to plead that the defendant shot the plaintiff. He must also allege he did it intentionally or negligently. If intentionally, it's the tort of a reason battery. If negligent and causing damage, it's the tort of negligence." And he goes on to make the point that the difference in between an assault or trespass to the person and negligence is that you do not need proof of damage for the former. Lord Diplock, in this judgment as well, at page 905, makes the point at C through to D, that the factual situation was the plaintiff's cause of action. So it doesn't matter what the label is. What counts is what actually occurred. And you need to look at that to decide which the appropriate tort is. And he agreed with Lord Denning that in this case it was negligence or then unintentional trespass. The point being that both Lord Denning and Lord Justice Diplock, then Lord Diplock, in that case were clear that an assault was a separate and distinct tort from negligence. We then go to Morris, where the confusion arises in my submission, divider 12, memory stick nine, seven, three. And my lords will be more than familiar with the facts, but it's a case of Belmont for Reward, where the Bailey's servant, Morrissey, to whom the fur had been entrusted, stole it. And maybe at this point, relevant to take you to the opening remarks of Lord Justice Diplock at nine, eight, seven. He disagreed with Lord Denning, who decided the case on the basis of a non-delegable duty, and said this, "I agree that this appeal should be allowed, although the legal route which has led me to this conclusion is not at all points identical with that traversed by the master of the law. After all, that is the beauty of the common law. It is a maze and not a motorway." In my submission, in this case, we've now got to the point where we're going to have to choose which trunk road to take.
Only a lawyer could say that, couldn't they?
But in this case, as is not in dispute, while Lord Denning decided it on the basis of a non-delegable duty, and I don't need to take you to it, but for your note, that is in my submission at page nine, eight, two, C and D. Both Lord Justice Diplock and Salmon decided the case on a basis of vicarious liability, that the servant, Morrissey, was vicariously, the defendant was vicariously liable for the servant, Morrissey, who stole the fur. And we see Lord Diplock's reasoning at page nine, eight, nine. At the bottom of the page, he distinguishes the two duties that exist and shouldn't be confused. Some confusion has, I think, arisen in later cases through failure to recognise the coexistence of the two duties of a Bailey for Reward. To take reasonable care is bailor's good and not convert them even by stealing. And then he goes on, and I would ask you to read the next paragraph to yourselves to make it plain that the defendant was vicariously liable for the theft.
Is this the paragraph beginning in what?
It's the paragraph-
If the Bailey?
Yes, my lady. There had been a previous case, Cheshire versus Bailey, which was to the contrary, which this case overruled. My lords, at memory stick nine, nine, seven, we can see that Lord Justice Salmon agreed that this was a case of vicarious liability. I accordingly agree with my lords that the appeal should be allowed. I'm anxious to have to make it plain that the conclusion which I've reached depends on Morrissey being the servant through whom the defendants chose to discharge their duty to take reasonable care of the plaintiff's fur. And then he deals with vicarious liability. But the important citation from Lord Justice Salmon is at nine, nine, five, where he is, first of all, at B, identifying the two causes of action, A, to take reasonable care, and B, not to do any intentional act inconsistent with it. And then he says below D, two lines, this, "It does not appear to me that in the circumstances of this case there's any relevance and distinction between the two causes of action. Where Morrissey stole the fur, he clearly converted it. Equally, clearly in my view, the act of stealing the fur was a glaring breach of the duty to take reasonable care to keep it safe, and this is negligence." And I accept that that judicial statement acknowledges or is the proposition that a deliberate act can breach a duty of care. And that then feeds through into the two judgments of Lord Hobhouse and Lord Millet in Lister, which is in your bundle at 10. And it is worth dealing with the history in a little detail. The claimant or claimants sued the defendant who had employed a Mr Grain as warden of a boarding house in a school, and he'd used that opportunity to abuse the boys. At first instance and before the Court of Appeal, the case of Trottman versus North Yorkshire was binding, and that had found in very similar circumstances, that sexual abuse was not something for which the defendant was vicariously liable, because it was, I think, to use the phrase of the Court of Appeal, an entire negation of the employer's duty, and so not in the course of employment. And to avoid the effect of Trottman, the claimants, or rather, the first of this judge, his honoured judge Walker, had instead found Grain liable for negligence. And his reasoning is at page nine, one, seven to nine, one, eight. And it starts at the bottom of nine, one, seven. The reasoning is that the defendant admits it had a duty of care towards the plaintiff. The duty was, care was to take all reasonable steps to safeguard the plaintiff. And my lords can read it to themselves, but he found at six, "A failure by Mr Grain to report harm to the boys would unquestionably be a failure to carry out a duty which he owed genuinely and specifically to each boy in his care. Because he hadn't reported it, the abuse wasn't identified, and so there was vicarious liability for Grain."
But not for the assault, for the failure to report it. Is that right?
That was his reasoning, yes.
Yes, I think.
And that was to avoid the effect of Trottman.
Yep.
When the case came before the House of Lords, obviously, they weren't bound by Trottman, but also the- But also, the Canadian Supreme Court had given their judgments in Basley and Jacoby, which all of the lordships considered Lord Millet giving more importance to it than others. All of the lords agreed that there was vicarious liability because while sexual assaults were 180 degrees from what he was meant to do in caring for the children, they were nonetheless an unauthorised way of doing what he was asked to do. And so there was a close connection. But the difference of analysis between Lord Hobhouse and Lord Millet was firstly that Lord Hobhouse seemed in part to be talking about a delegated duty. And we see that in paragraph fifty five, memory stick nine three five.
Nine.
Three five, my lady.
Thank you.
Then, my lords, at page nine three six, having cited extensively from Diplock in Morris, he then said in his judgment, below that citation at D, Lord Justice Salmon expressed himself similarly, referring to the duties of a Bailey. He said at page seven three eight, the act of stealing the fur was a glaring breach of the duty to take reasonable care, and this is negligence. That's the passage I've already taken you to. Doing the opposite of what is your duty to do is still a breach of that duty. My lords, I feel it necessary to mention this because one of the arguments which was advanced by the respondents and which has found some favour has been that it cannot be a breach of a duty of care to take a child of duty to take care of a child, to abuse him. It is an exemplary and egregious breach of the servant's duty, both to his employee and to the child. The appreciation that there are duties involved is at the heart of the analysis and the identification of the criteria for the existence or no of vicarious liability. By contrast, Lord Millet at page nine four six, paragraphs eighty two to eighty four, identified vicarious liability. Paragraph eighty two relying on Basley and Jacoby. And then at paragraph eighty three, found that there was vicarious liability for assaults. But at paragraph eighty four in his judgment, he said this: I would hold the school vicariously liable for the warden's intentional assaults, not, as was suggested in argument, for his failure to perform his duty to take care of the boys. That is an artificial approach based on a misreading of Morris. The cleaners were vicariously liable for their employees' conversion of the fur, not for his negligence in failing to look after it. Similarly, in photo productions versus Securico, the security firm was vicariously liable for the patrolman's arson, not for his negligence. The law is mature enough to hold an employer vicariously liable for deliberate criminal wrongdoing on the part of an employee without indulging in sophistry of this kind. I would also not base liability on the warden's failure to report his own wrongdoing to his employer, an approach which I regard to be both artificial and unrealistic. Even if such a duty did exist, on which I prefer not to express an opinion, I'm inclined to think it would be a duty owed exclusively to the employer and not a duty for breach which the employer could be vicariously liable. And so Lord Millet's position, which is echoed by Lord Phillips in various claimants, is the one preferred in my submission. And we can also see that in K R.
So you said it echoed in the Christian Brothers case?
Yes, in the paragraph I took you to at the beginning, which is where I said we finished, paragraph sixty two.
Sixty two, thank you, yes. Did Lord Stain say anything about it?
They, the other lordships, reserved their position on it because they found that there was vicarious liability for the criminal act.
I mean, the precise difference between Lord Hobhouse and Lord Millet in Lister, which is bang on the point that we're now on. Was that ever before the court in the Christian Brothers case?
I'm so sorry.
Was that ever before the court in the Christian Brothers?
I'm sure Lister was cited in.
Oh, Lister would have been cited, yes. Of course it was, because Lister's the case which establishes that there's vicarious liability.
I don't know if the.
There was no debate about a non-delegable duty.
No, so that point may not have arisen because by them.
You say it's implicit in sixty two.
Well, Lord Phillips is clearly saying, whether it's because he draws it from Lister or it is his own view, that an assault is not a negligent act.
Well, he's on the close connection, isn't he?
Well, my lord, the close connection. And we say that is the right way to approach a deliberate act.
Yeah. Yes, I see.
Because otherwise, as I started out, if a non-delegable duty or breach of a non-delegable duty to take care includes or is breached by an assault, then close connection disappears, particularly where you are dealing with a non-delegable duty to an employee.
But of course, you have to have all the other elements in woodland.
For a non-delegable duty, undoubtedly.
Yes. So that does not mean that you're invariably liable for anything.
No, no, but of course, there is a distinction in the woodland criteria we're applying here because it's not an employer employee. So the five-stage test by Lord Sumption.
Well, that too, of course, is not an employer employee. That was the whole point of.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, my lady.
But you've got to have all five features.
Before a non-delegable duty arises.
Before a non-delegable duty arises.
Yes.
That does mean that it's got to have the particular sort of relationship, the particular sort of victim, the particular sort of activity or function. So it's got to have all of those.
Absolutely, my lady. But if I may respond in two ways, please. First, what Lord Sumption was saying in woodland is because of those elements, the pre-existing relationship, the vulnerability of the victim, the.
The victim has to be in the custody or care.
Okay, the custody.
Basically, that's what I was getting at. So we're talking about a pretty narrowly confined class of.
Well, my lady, we're not, because we're talking about patients, we're talking about prisons, we're talking about old people's homes, we're talking about children.
Well, he said possibly prisons and old people's homes. Of course, those two other.
We haven't got there yet, but I would be surprised if in an old people's home there wouldn't potentially be a non-delegable duty. And one has to think then about how far it will deal with patients and private hospitals, et cetera. But, my lady, the point I wanted to make was the pre-existing relationship and care, custody and control changes the duty from one which is personal to one which can't be delegated. It doesn't change the content of the duty in my submission.
Yes, and the whole point is whether the duty that is owed, which obviously everybody owes a duty not to assault people, is only a duty to take reasonable care or whether it also covers a duty not to assault people. That is the whole debate, and I'm not entirely sure how much. We know there's a distinction between the two, but I'm not entirely sure how much it helps.
How does it help here?
Well, if you decided in this case that there was a non-delegable duty because Lord Sumption's five criteria were fulfilled, that non-delegable duty in this case would not be breached by the assaults. Because if my submission is right and an assault doesn't breach a duty to take care.
Yep. We understand that that's your argument, but there is, of course, another duty, not intentionally to injure people.
Of course there is, yes.
Not to assault people.
Yes.
And the only question is whether that is capable also of being non-delegable.
In my submission, not, my lady.
Well, we understand that's your submission.
What's the philosophical underpinning for that? I mean, why?
Well, I tried to start off with that because the duty not to assault is one that everyone owes irrespective of any prior relationship.
Yes, but a non-delegable duty does not arise unless it's a particular sort of victim in a particular sort of relationship.
But that non-delegable duty, because of that relationship, gives rise to a duty of care.
Well, that's your point.
Yes.
Why, unless I've got it wrong, there are two quite separate roots or questions here. One is whether the duty, the legal obligation not to hit people, not to assault, is itself capable of being a non-delegable duty.
Yes.
That's one question.
Yes.
As I understood it, the question you've most recently been on is not so much that as whether where there is a prior duty of care, hitting somebody is not only an assault, that is to say, a breach of the legal obligation not to assault people,
Yes.
but also a breach of the duty of care.
Absolutely, my lord, yes.
And those are two different possible routes, aren't they?
Yes, and I'm dealing with the first, and I will then come to the second.
I thought you'd already.
I think you're dealing with the second, but never mind, yes, okay. Certainly, Lord Hobhouse and Lord Millet in Lister are talking about the question of whether, when an assault is committed by somebody who does owe a prior duty of.
Yes, my apologies. You're quite right.
He's not only committed the tort of assault, but has also committed a breach of the duty of care. That's the question they're on, isn't it? It's the question Lord Salmon was on in.
In Morris.
In Morris.
And it was the question that Lord Justice Old dealt with in K R.
Yes.
So if I can take you to.
So, and you say, do you, that if I, I mean, if I may say, may I pick up Lord Reed's example of the nurse?
Yes.
Who is under a prior duty of care to the patient herself.
Absolutely.
Leave aside the employer for the moment, but on any view, she is. And your case is that if she accidentally poisons the patient, she's in breach of the duty of care and liable.
Yes.
But if she.
Well, the institution is liable for her.
Yep, quite, but if she deliberately poisons the patient, she hasn't committed any breach of the duty of care.
She has.
She's only committed the separate legal wrong of assault.
Yes, absolutely. And as a result, if there is vicarious liability,
Yes.
the institution is liable for her, but not for breach of its duty of care, which is the non-delegable, unless, as Lady Hale says, you change the content of the non-delegable duty to be wider than the duty to take care.
Yep.
But my submission is, as indicated at the start, that that has very wide repercussions. And it wouldn't be narrowly confined because Lord Sumption's five criteria cover a very wide range of situations.
Right.
To finish on the whether an assault breaches a duty of care, can I take you to K R? Which is at divider eight, memory stick eight three seven. Again, a case dealing with abuse in a care home. And while the majority of the fourteen claimants brought a claim for negligence in failing to prevent assaults, three of them brought a claim in vicarious liability for the assaults themselves. And the issue then became, because at that time stubbings was good law, whether those were claims for personal injury or claims for a deliberate act. And so we have at memory stick eight seven four through to eight seven nine, what's described by Lord Justice Old, who gave the judgment of the court as the Lister point. And I hope that brief introduction means that I don't need to deal with the first paragraphs, but the issue that the court was considering is at page eight seven six, paragraph one oh one. There's reference to La Tangue. And then at C, thus it's necessary when an issue of limitation arises to consider whether the factual situation alleged fits section eleven criteria, whether or not it also fits other criteria entitling to bring in action. If the alleged factual situation does fit section eleven criteria, the fact that it may also be characterised as another form of tort, say trespass to the person, does not exclude the shorter but extendable limitation in section eleven for breach of duty causing personal injury. And again, there's reference to Lord Justice Salmon in Morris. And then at one oh five across the page, Lord Justice Old cites from paragraph fifty five of Lord Hobhouse's speeches in Lister, but he prefaces it by saying this: However, Lord Hobhouse in the following passage at two three nine, through the concept of an employer entrusting his duty of care to an employee to protect children in sexual abuse, appears to have included in that duty his employer's quite separate and general duty as a citizen, not to abuse children, breach of which, if closely connected with his employment, also engages his employer's vicarious liability. And, my lady, my lords, that is the point I make about the actual nature of the criminal act and the nature of the obligation not to commit it. At one oh eight, at memory stick eight seven nine, after having considered Lord Millet's views, Lord Justice Old comes to this conclusion. In our view, the correct approach is as Lord Millet has expressed it. Whether or not section eleven is in play, it is to identify the wrongful act, deliberate or otherwise, in respect of which vicarious responsibility is claimed, and to assess the closeness of its connection to the employment in question. If the act is sufficiently closely connected with the employment, there is vicarious responsibility. In such circumstances, and bearing in mind Lord Griffiths's reasonings in stubbings, there is no justification or need for the purpose of establishing vicarious responsibility to ally the duty in respect of which the employer's deliberate act is a breach with a duty of care delegated or entrusted to him by the employer. The two are quite distinct. And so, my lords, my submission is it's clear that the two are distinct. There's a reference in our case to Lord Hoffman in A where he describes arguments which had been run prior to stubbing to avoid the effect of the stubbing decision that an assault didn't fall within section eleven as increasingly artificial. And that was one of the reasons the House of Lords in A versus Hall found that the duty in section eleven, not negligence or nuisance, but duty, was included, the duty not to assault. Returning it to La Tangue versus Cooper.
Yeah.
And I know my lady was involved in that case.
I was involved in that case. I would have thought it was the one that told us what the answer was rather than.
What Lord Hoffman said is that these arguments were increasingly artificial and aimed to get around the difficulty in stubbings. And one should call a tort what it is. Now.
I mean, you've cited at length from K R and Bryn Allen, which was disapproved in A and Hall.
No, my lady, the reasoning of Old in K R was as to the nature of the tort.
As it was all as to the nature of the breach of duty that was encompassed in section eleven of the Limitation Act, wasn't it?
But all in the end, A did is return us to La Tangue and say that the duty in section eleven is breached by an assault. It didn't, in my submission, that's what Lord Hoffman indicated, say that an assault is a breach of a duty of care. And he described arguments to attempt to dress it up as such as artificial. And the artificiality of such arguments is clear when it's attempting to get around a limitation period, in particular, the ruling in stubbings. But not when you're actually talking about liability itself. And when dealing with liability, as all Phillips said in various claimants, one needs to, as it were, call a spade a spade. So if a duty of care isn't breached by an assault, should the content of the delegated duty be altered? And that has only been considered previously in the Australian decision of Lapoore, which is in bundle two, divider twenty four. which is in bundle two, divider twenty four, memory stick one four four one.
Can I just ask to understand where we're going? Are you arguing that the local authority is under no, that the local authority's duties don't include a duty not to inflict intentional harm?
Yes.
Right.
Well, you're arguing that there's no non-delegable duty not to inflict intentional harm.
And I was putting, I was going to approach it in stages. Question was, first of all, is there a duty not to assault? And secondly, if there is such a duty, is it non-delegable?
A local authority acts for its individuals, and we think of Ex or Barrett, and on each individual involved, there will be a duty not to commit an assault, absolutely, because it's a duty that applies to each individual. But it's not the duty of care that arises from the relationship as we've seen created food of statutory.
The local authority itself is under a duty of care. Agreed?
Yes.
Or do we, is that...
No, 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 of course the local authority is a duty of care.
Right. But do you dispute the local authority is under a duty not to inflict intentional harm?
The duty not to, everyone owes a duty not to inflict intentional harm to everyone else.
Including the local authority.
My lord, I can't see how a corporate body, it's only through the individuals...
Well, how does a local authority...
That's true of every duty.
Yes, how can it breach a duty of care?
It's different in my submission position when one is talking about personal actions between individuals, criminal acts, as opposed to making arrangements which have to be made with care.
But individuals make those arrangements.
Of course they do.
It's all done through people.
But going back to what Lord Justice Old said in K R, it's the citizen's duty not to assault, every citizen owes that duty, and so everyone involved in the local authority will owe that duty.
And presumably every corporation.
Everyone involved in the corporation.
Know the corporation itself, though, too. I mean, if a board of directors got together and decided deliberately to commit some offence...
That would undoubtedly be, they would all have committed an offence and the company under criminal law would be liable.
But the company would be liable under civil law as well, because it would be the actual...
Yes, I accept that, but the reason is because the directors, the controlling mind, have taken that step.
At the moment, I don't understand why, if a local authority can commit the tort of negligence, why it can't commit the tort of battery, for example.
Because, my lord, my submission is that the tort of battery arises because of duties that citizens owe to each other, whereas the tort of negligence arrives from relationships of proximity which are created by the statutory powers which the local authority has to undertake.
But if a local authority, for example, enforcing bylaws or concern about drinking in public or something like that, took it into its head to send out its people to collect drinkers in the street, put them in the back of a van and take them off somewhere, then unless that was in some way authorised, it would probably be the tort of battery, wouldn't it?
Undoubtedly, there would be a tort of battery there because someone in the local authority has given a direction to others to carry it out.
Well, and the local authority itself would be liable. It wouldn't be vicariously liable because it would have directed it from its council.
Controlling mind would have directed it, but...
For example, there was a case in Scotland years ago where Lord Johnson tried it, where he held that Strathclyde Regional Council was poisoning the people who lived in Strathclyde Region by compulsory fluoridation of the drinking water. Now, that wasn't a negligent act, that was a deliberate act, but it was held to be tortious or delictual, as they would say north of the border. With the same, I think you have to say, well, that was some sort of legal error because the regional council couldn't commit a tort of that kind.
Well, my lord, all you could say that the controlling minds it was vicariously liable for because they committed the tort.
The controlling minds in this instance being the...
Director of Social Services, I suppose. So if the director of social services instructed social workers to go out and attack children, the local authority would undoubtedly be vicariously liable for that. But would it have been, in my submission, it doesn't breach a direct duty because...
What if the local authority resolved en banc to...
Well, the answer most likely, my lord, is if they decided en banc to send people out, it would be misfeasance in public office.
Yeah. Pin and dancing on the head of...
Sorry, my lord?
No, not at all.
Well, how are we doing?
Well, we're going to try and deal with Lapoore, my lady.
Yes, you have been rather deflected from that.
My lady, in Lapoore and Salmon and Rich, both involved the non-delegable duty in respects of schools, and it's worth identifying the background to each case because it is a slightly labyrinthine judgment. Lapoore was a claimant in a school who was assaulted by a teacher who took him into a cupboard and spanked him. There was a trial at first instance where it was said the school were negligent. That was dismissed, and instead, the argument of a breach of a non-delegable duty was advanced at trial rather than direct liability. The trial judge held that the local authority, the state, in that case, New South Wales, wasn't liable. Instead, and the claimant appealed, the Court of Appeal, by a majority of two, found that a non-delegable duty was breached by an assault. Vicarious liability wasn't pleaded. Salmon and Rich involved two claimants who were sexually assaulted by a teacher. They sued the state, in that case Queensland, alleging a non-delegable duty of care. The state sought to strike out the claim. They were successful at first instance and in the Court of Appeal, and all three cases came before the Australian High Court. In the intervening period, Basley and Jacoby had been handed down in Canada and Lister had been handed down in the United Kingdom, and as a result, both Lapoore and Salmon and Rich sought in the alternative to refine vicarious liability. So in the six judgments, each considered vicarious liability and a non-delegable duty of care, all accepted that there was a non-delegable duty of care. Only McHugh J found it was breached by an assault. There was division on whether there was vicarious liability or not, the majority deciding not in the cases of Salmon and Rich, but the case of Lapoore was sent back for retrial. And if I can take you to the judgment of the Chief Justice Gleeson, where he deals with And he and those who agree with him identified two bases for rejecting the contention that an assault breached a non-delegable duty to take care. First, that it would inform a stricter form of liability than had been contemplated and which took responsibility beyond the law of negligence. And second, because criminal acts were better dealt with by vicarious liability. And so if I can take you to one four six one, paragraph thirty one. The failure to take care of the plaintiff, which resulted in the Commonwealth's liability intervened, was a negligent omission on the part of the teachers at the school acting in the course of their ordinary duties. The hospital cases, which were treated by Mason J as analogous, similarly involved negligence. The responsibility to take reasonable care for the safety of another, the responsibility to ensure that reasonable care is taken for the safety of another, is substantially different from the obligation to prevent any kind of harm. Furthermore, though deliberately and criminally inflicting injury on another person involves a failure to take care of that person, it involves more. If a member of a hospital staff, my lord Reed, this is in some sense your example, with homicidal propensity were to attack and injure a patient in circumstances where there was no fault on the part of the hospital authorities or any other person for whose act or omissions to the hospital was vicariously responsible, the common law should not determine the question of the hospital's liability to the patient on the footing that the staff member had neglected to take reasonable care of the patient. It should face up to the fact that the staff member had criminally assaulted the patient and addressed the problem of the circumstances in which an employer may be vicariously liable for the criminal acts of an employee. Intentional wrongdoing, especially intentional criminality, introduces a factor of legal relevance beyond a mere failure to take care. Homicide, rape and theft are all acts that are inconsistent with care of a person or property, but to characterise them as a failure to take care for the purpose of assigning tortious responsibility to a third party would be to evade an issue. And again, my lord, in relation to the questions you've just been asking me, my submission is that is relevant. As will appear, the courts of the highest...
Well, it's one thing, isn't it, to say, as lots of the citations you've given to us, say that it's evading an issue to call a deliberate breach of duty a breach of a duty of care.
Yes, my lord.
You've cited many observations to that effect. It doesn't follow that the legal consequences of both sorts of breach are not the same.
I accept that, my lady.
And that's really what we're wrestling with.
Yes, and I say for the reasons I've identified, A, vicarious liability, and two, this creates, if you were to go down the road of assuming that a duty of care was breached by an assault, it creates a very strict liability on those who fulfil the woodland criteria and on the employer, because I see no reason, if you find in this case, that it, sorry, in a woodland case of non-delegable duty, why it wouldn't apply to an employer employee non-delegable duty. As will appear, the courts of the highest authority in England and Canada and courts in other common law jurisdictions have analysed the problem of the liability of a school authority for sexual abuse of pupils by teachers in terms of vicarious liability. If the argument based on non-delegable duty said to be supported by intervene is correct, their efforts have been misdirected and the conclusions have reached, have unduly restricted liability. If the proposition accepted in the Court of Appeal of New South Wales is correct and represents the law in Australia, then the liability of school authorities in the country extends beyond that which has been accepted in other common law jurisdictions. Moreover, in this country, where a relationship of employer and employee exists, if the duty of care owed to a victim by the employer can be characterised as personal or non-delegable, then the potential responsibility of an employer for the intentional and criminal conduct of an employee extends beyond that which flows from the principles governing vicarious liability. It is unconstrained by considerations about whether the employee was acting in the course of his employment. It is enough that the victim has been injured by the employee on an occasion when the employer's duty of care covered the victim. The employer's duty to take care or to see that reasonable care is taken has been transformed into an absolute duty to prevent harm by the employee. It's similar to the duty owed by owners of animals who have vicious propensities. And then, in simply thirty nine, memory stick one four six five, concludes that vicarious liability is the proper way of analysing no-fault liability for assaults in schools.
And did that represent a majority of you?
Yes, it did. The three judgments which deal with it in detail are that of the Chief Justice Gleeson, Justice Goldrum and the joint judgment by Justice Gummow and Hain. And I'll take you to the other two, so that was four. The only person who disagreed, Kirby and Callinan dealt with it shortly, really agreeing with the majority, the only person who disagreed was Justice McHugh.
I see the case has been described by Lord Phillips as convincing and bewildering variety of analysis.
Yeah, yes.
Paragraph eighty two of all those cases.
Others describe it more kindly, but I think, my lord, when Lord Phillips was dealing with it, he was dealing with the issue of vicarious liability.
Oh, yes, of course he was, yes.
And there was an array of different approaches to the issue of vicarious liabilities, I tried to indicate, and they came to a much more restricted view of vicarious liability or course of employment than the close connection test in Lister, which is why they dismissed the appeals in Salmon versus Rich, where, as here, that would not have been the case.
Or did Kirby adopt the close connection test?
I think, you caught me on the hop, my lady, I think Kirby did, but the decision was that Lapoore could go back to be retried because the action was one of physical chastisement, which clearly was in the course of employment, because it may be that the school had allowed physical chastisement.
I think you'll find that he simply said that vicarious liability depends on the connection.
Yeah. I mean, it was less advanced than Basley and Lister. But on the non-delegable duty point, with the exception of McHugh, they were all agreed in the leading judgment for similar reasons. So if I can take you next to the judgment of Goldrum J. And page one four eight one, paragraph ninety nine, it's not, and at no stage in these proceedings has it been an issue, that the duties owed by education authorities to their pupils are non-delegable. As already indicated, so much was established by the decision of this court in intervene. What is in issue is the nature of the duty of that kind. And then if I can take you, please, over the page to one oh three, one oh four. It's worth considering, when you have time to deliberate, one oh one and one oh two, but it's one oh three and one oh four which I rely on. There's a tendency to speak in the case of an employer of a duty to provide a safe system of work, or in the case of an education authority, a duty to provide a safe school environment, without acknowledging either that in that context, safe means free, of a foreseeable risk of harm, or that the duty is to take reasonable care. If the duty of an education authority to provide a safe school environment was not confined by considerations of foreseeability and reasonable care, it would result in strict liability in the sense that the authority would be liable upon proof of injury being sustained on the school premises during school hours. But that would follow not because the duty of an education authority is non-delegable, but because of the absolute nature of its non-delegable duty. And then she cites the passage from Lord Blackburn in Hughes and Percival, paragraph one oh five, and comments, thus to describe the duty of a school authority is non-delegable, is not to identify a duty that extends beyond taking reasonable care to avoid a foreseeable risk of injury. It's simply to say that, if a reasonable care is not taken to avoid a foreseeable risk of injury, the school authority is liable notwithstanding it engaging qualified and ostensibly competent persons to carry out some or all of its functions. If I can take you to Gummow and Hain, please, my lady.
Well, can you do so quickly because it's nearly one o'clock?
Well, I can stop here and resume.
Are you on track?
I am on track, I believe I'm ahead of track, is it right?
Oh, well, then we will rise now.
Yes.
Look forward to hearing from you further at two o'clock. Look forward to hearing from you further at two o'clock.